Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. I'm Doug Flournoy, the mayor pro tem. Mayor Boyer could not be here tonight, so I'll be running the meeting. And just so the public knows, although I'm running the meeting, I'm still a member of the council, so I can take part in all deliberations and vote, just like any other council member. All right, call the rule, please.
Ham?
Here.
To Hill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flournoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum. Would any member of the council like to add a discussion item to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four council meeting. Approval of the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four payroll in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand thirty dollars and sixty-six cents. Resolution of employment for Park and Recreation Department. Acceptance of the Water and Sewer Utilities Committee meeting minutes. Acceptance of the Arbor Committee minutes. Approval of liquor license for La Hacienda de Marilla. America in Fairfield. Fairfield Fast and Fresh. Approval of Iowa Department of Revenue ACH payment in the amount of two thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and eight cents. Approval of the total claims in the amount of seven hundred thirty-four thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. There were three claims in excess of seventy-five thousand dollars. One for Boomerang Corporation in the amount of three hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. That's for work on step three. Southeast Iowa Cities and Counties, seventy-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and eight cents. That's an insurance premium. And finally, Woodruff Construction in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred forty-five dollars.
I have two questions on the claims, please. The first one being Supplies to Midwest One Bank in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars. What would we have paid Midwest One Bank that much in Supplies? And then this-
That's the credit-
The credit card.
The Midwest One has a credit card.
Credit card that's paid. Okay, thank you.
So that was from all the departments.
Okay, and then Veolia WTS Solutions. What is that company doing?
WTS Solutions. What's the-
It's V E O L I A. It's also Supplies for twenty-two, one seventeen.
Was that on that same account?
Uh, it's on the same claim. It's a different line item. Without actually looking at it. The big quadrant I had was the Midwest one.
Actually, I'll be honest with you, I don't remember that one specifically. I did review the claims, so-
Okay, uh, it's involved, that's locked up. It's okay, I'm sure, yeah. The Midwest One Bank was on, I'm like, why are we buying Supplies? Didn't make sense.
It's because that credit card, um, it, that statement comes at a different time as well. And so, to handle it, it is just kept separately and just handled then altogether. So when the claims are gone through, um, then that is also looked at.
Perhaps it could be retitled in the future to make it clear, like Midwest One credit card payment or something like that.
It's just the name of the vendor, so that's the way it looks.
Midwest One Supplies is the vendor?
No, Midwest One is the vendor, and then Supplies is the-
Summary description, yeah.
Midwest One credit card.
How about Midwest One slash Supplies? Anyway, I just think it might be useful to maybe have a different title.
There's a large number of line items under Midwest One.
Right.
A very, um, under the credit card, so, like every, every department then has every subcategory for the department that it's listed under.
Maybe put like Visa or Mastercard after it, so that we know that it's the credit card, I guess?
Yeah, it could probably be listed as, I imagine.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Good, any other questions?
I was, as I said too, I reviewed the claims and they all seem in order, so-
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Move by Gandy. Second by Kness. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
It looks like that company, Veolia, um, Industrial Water and Process Treatment Technologies and Solutions. Okay. So, something-
It was a valve. It was a very expensive valve. I, I do know what that was now.
Great, thank you guys.
Great. Anything else? Call the rule then.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flournoy?
Yes.
Okay, no one here has asked to speak for the public forum or appear before council. So we'll go right to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. So I'll open a public hearing on the matter of the annexation of Northridge addition parcels zero six two four one zero 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 six, zero six two four one zero 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 eight six, parcel zero six two four one zero zero one five four, and parcel zero six two four one zero 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 one one. Would anyone like to speak to that annexation? Could you state your name and address or ward number?
I'm, uh, Mark Brad, I'm the applicant for the annexation, and, uh, it's for the, uh, property, uh, that, uh, formerly was Reef Grain and Feed, and, uh, about sixteen acres. And, uh, we're developing it. MIU will eventually take about half of it, but we want to, uh, bring it in the city so we can subdivide it and apply city rules and use the city water and sewer.
Great, thank you. How many homes will you, or residences will you put up?
We have thirty-seven homes planned there. We haven't, uh, we haven't done anything in, uh, subdividing yet, 'cause it's still in the county. And, uh, but, uh, we have, we have thirty-seven homes planned, and that's on the eastern eight acres, adjacent to the north campus village. And then the western eight acres, uh, along with the former Spies Auction, there's two parcels down there. They'll be annexing those two parcels. MIU owns those two parcels. Along with that, MIU is, has plans for, uh, student and possibly faculty housing there. And they haven't worked out a design yet or anything, but they have, we've worked out an agreement where they would take half of that land.
Great, so I take it you're here in favor of the annexation?
I'm here in favor, yes, would like to go on record as being in favor.
Great, thank you very much for your contribution.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else would like to address the issue? Keith? This is not me.
Uh, Keith Bladamar. Uh, I have a question about the description on parcel three of the, uh, annexation on line seven. It starts out less all that. And to me, less all that means it's an exception to the deed. So there's going to be a piece that won't be annexed into the city if you left out. Where that piece is, I don't know. I didn't, uh, plot it out, so... I guess I'll leave that to the attorneys to decide what they want to do on that.
Can't get my document to open, so I can't read it.
Is it that part that says less all that certain parcel of land conveyed to the city of Fairfield, Jefferson County, Iowa, for alley purposes?
Yes.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, who writes these?
The description?
Yeah.
A long time ago, the attorneys for Harvey Condon, when he owned the elevator. These, these are the descriptions that were used when the elevator, uh, transferred.
So these were written a long time ago?
For reef, yeah.
They're lifted from another document?
They are.
I see.
Uh, what's difficult about it, uh, your honor, is that it, uh, it makes reference to some things where basically you have to go back and research other filings to get to what this means. My impression is it means half of an alley for about a, uh, block long or whatever, but- Three hundred and forty feet or something like that. Yeah, and that's approximately what it would work out to, so, but, uh- There's nothing against-
Oh, well, I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I think I understand it, what it says. It's, it, uh, includes all of this, less anything that's already been conveyed to the city of Fairfield.
Right.
So it's already been, a piece of land that's already been conveyed by another document.
Mm-hmm. And I think that's the little, uh, parcel that comes up from Highway one, and, uh, I think, but either way-
Right.
We're only getting what's, what's conveyed.
So, your question, Keith, is the description of that parcel?
Well, it's an exception to that parcel.
'Cause that same verbiage is used on page three also.
You can't annex it if it's already part of the city.
Right.
It's not part of the city, the city just owns it.
But the parcel that's parcel three is in the county.
Right.
So that half is part of this parcel, but the other half of that, the city already has in possession, is what it's saying here in number three.
I don't have, easy question.
Yes. What was already previously conveyed was partial ownership of that alleyway.
To the city.
To the city. And so it's making clear that the part that belongs to Jefferson County, that they are now getting ready to annex, is, is what is part of this parcel.
'Cause they can't convey-
No, it's an exception to the parcel.
It is, they, they can't convey it twice, it's already been conveyed once.
It's not conveyed, it's just it won't be in the city.
Got it. 'Cause they also talk, they use that same verbiage discussing the Iowa State Highway. That it's less the highway on page three, which makes sense. I mean, that seems appropriate.
Yeah, that's my professional opinion.
Are you voicing an opinion in favor of the annexation or opposed to it?
Oh, no, I don't care about the annexation. I'm, I'm just saying that this is going to be an exception, and it needs to be included in the annexation.
But I think it's already been annexed or conveyed to the city.
It has?
I think so, that's our, however we do it.
Yeah.
A lot of the roadways are split, certain roadways, let me go there, are split between city and county in certain areas. And so that's what this is talking about. The split has already taken place, that's already been, um, annexed or whatever previously. And so now there's a second portion.
You're under the assumption that we owned it, but it was not part of the city? Is that right?
No, it was part of the city, well, the city owns it, yes.
Right, but was not part of the city.
According to how I read this, it is not going to be annexed into the city.
And I read it because it was already part of the city, it's why they're excluding it, because it, they don't need to annex it, because it's, so I guess-
I might have the help here.
Yeah, go ahead.
And that is, it also describes, uh, what I bought. And so, I'm only applying for the, the part that I bought.
Yep.
And it excludes that. And that is on the south side of all of this land, and the, and the new, the new city limits, on the north side of this parcel. The old city limits are contiguous with all of this land, so the part that will not appear on the plat as to be annexed is the part that I didn't buy. On the south end, it won't, it won't affect any kind of a city line, because I don't, I'm not applying for anything other than what I bought. So there's, what the city owns for that alley is on the south side of this line? That's right, and then here's the, the, the new annexation line I'm proposing, 'cause I only bought those. And so the part that's excluded doesn't matter. Yeah, oh, right, I just didn't know where that was at, so, okay. That answered my question.
Great, thank you, Keith. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the, uh, annexation question? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Okay, next item, a resolution, consideration of annex of Northridge additions, same parcels as listed earlier.
I'd move to approve.
Motion by Kness.
Second.
Second by Gandy. There's a motion on the floor to consider or approve the annexation of Northridge Addition, parcels, uh, zero six two four one zero 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 six, zero six two four one zero 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 eight six, zero six two four one zero zero one five four, and parcel zero six two four one zero 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 one one. Is there any, uh, discussion?
I, I do have one, probably stupid question.
Is that a zero?
If, if I'm looking at the map and, and we're not annexing the part that Martin's not buying, are we creating an island?
No.
No? Okay.
It's contiguous with that whole north end, if you look at the map, and, and if you want-
I was talking about the part in the south, that little corner in the south.
Little, there's a little corner in the south, a little corner-
On the, on the east? Yes.
Lots, and there are lots, MIU owns the lots that contain the trail. And so there's a clear path to go up and grab what looks like an island, and, and I know they have their sights on that. We discussed that I'm not creating that.
Okay.
So those white portions, yes.
Well, there's one on, yes.
But if you look, you look at Jefferson County Trail, those all have, there's easements for the trail, but MIU owns all that. And they, they're happily would, in another round of annexation, to grab that little piece that could be an island to the east, they, they'll, they'll go along with that. But right now, there is a clear path of unincorporated lots that run up to that little, uh, three acre parcel.
So the time to address that, whether it would be an island or not, is when MIU takes action?
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, and, uh, that will probably be fairly soon, so, um, anyway, uh, Melanie says that their, the city is very interested in getting that. While it's not an island, it is a peninsula, and they'd rather not have peninsulas here, but this doesn't, this doesn't prevent them from doing that. They just have to get around to it and do it.
Okay.
So it's not going to be a long-term island?
It's not an island, it's not, it's more like a peninsula, which is acceptable, it's just weird to have one that, in the city,
what do they call it, the city board, you know, in, in Des Moines, they, they don't like it. Development board. Development board. They don't like it, but this is reasonable. But it's not an island, it's something that's really important.
Entertainer motion.
Okay.
Oh, we have a motion already.
In a second.
Any further discussion? Call the rule, please.
Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flournoy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, council, the next item is an action item, uh, to consider the addition of services request by Klinger, Nerr, and Associates. This is for additional work on the fire station.
I think-
Would Melanie to talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, there were, um, I think, probably the best way to describe it is that Klinger was given, um, direction on the fire station when the referendum passed, but the direction did not include a solid budget. Um, they were told, you know, this is what the referendum passed for, but they were never given a, don't design past this. And, um, there was not guidance from staff on what to design for, and that's how we ended up with, um, you know, I started with this eight million or seven million dollar building, and then we went to a twelve million dollar building that included everything that everyone wanted. And, um, at that point, then, um, I had a, um, minor heart attack, and, um, we sat there and recovered for a while, and, um, then, uh, when Doug got here after Aaron left, uh, we were able to have the conversation with Klinger on how to proceed in a manner that the city could afford. And, um, so, without giving them good guidance, I, um, understand the request for additional services, because they were, they started down a path, um, that they thought was appropriate, uh, based on the guides we had given them. Um, so they have been doing, uh, they did a lot of redesign, uh, during this, but then also just giving, um, a lot of different options for us to consider, uh, doing, you know, the mezzanine storage, uh, moving the tower. Uh, one of the things, and this is later on in my engineering report, is they've developed an alternative that combines the hose tower and the training tower. Um, so they have been proceeding in, uh, good faith to get us a floor plan that meets or is closer to our budget, given, uh, current, um, you know, current construction prices. And so they are requesting additional, um, services. At this time, uh, they have spent approximately twenty thousand additional dollars, uh, but they are requesting additional, um, twenty plus an additional twenty, so forty thousand total, uh, to finish, um, to finish this up. They're expecting that they will just, they will have a few more things to, to fine tune in order to get, again, to get this to the point of ready, ready to go to bed.
Are they also asking for an additional sixteen thousand and five hundred dollars be budgeted for services? Or is that included in that forty thousand?
Um, so the sixteen five was included in the original budget. And we actually, um, their contract was an hour, uh, portions of their contract was hourly not to exceed, and the sixteen five, they only used half of that.
Oh, okay.
So they're saying, well, yes, we're asking for forty, but we also-
They do money.
Eight thousand five hundred in testing.
So what direction has, have we given them at this point?
Um, they, um, the floor plan, so there's a floor plan, um, attached at the end of the council agenda, uh, that, um, next to the project update, that if the council wants to approve it tonight, or if they want to send it to committee to approve and review, um, with kind of approval of that, I think staff and Klinger would be ready to move into the very final, like, preparing the bid package and be ready to go. Um, so we have not given them kind of a final, absolutely, let's, this is what we're going to design, because when the, uh, committee met at the end of last calendar year, what to do about the, um, tow, about the tower, and the training tower and the hose tower was still up in the air. We had, the committee had asked them to go back and give us some options, and this is what they came back with.
Which committee?
Uh, Public Safety and Transportation, before everyone on that committee left.
Right.
So.
Right, I just wanted to clarify, that it wasn't like the firehouse?
No, no, it was, it was, um, it was council committee.
And this floor plan, if it were accepted, just as is, where are we talking amount? You said that'll fit on our budget, but did they have a, a general idea what that plan would cost?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
That's all right. It's all right.
Um, I mean, it is-
I can get it from you.
Still that number that, uh, we were talking in December, um, because the number that we were talking in December, um, it would actually, I mean, okay, it would be about the same, because by the time you take out the hose tower, 'cause you would be combining the hose tower and the training tower, and then you add a little bit for inflation, that, you know, they're going to be, they're going to be somewhere.
Okay.
Um, and I think also from that December meeting, um, there was a little bit rearranging of some spaces as well, based off of the December meeting.
So we have given them directions to budget?
Uh, we have now, again, after, after my mini heart attack, I just, I mean, I'm perfectly fine. But, um, after the panic about the number that they had given us back in, uh, twenty-two, um, that's when we realized that we had not given them clear direction and a set value, and so we gave them, what number did we give them?
Was that the eight?
Well, I think it was eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Near eight, maybe, though.
Yes, yes.
Which is the original ballpark number, but now we've engineered it because of inflation and other rises in product costs. Motion?
No.
In a motion?
I move to approve?
Yeah, second.
Moved by Gandy, second by To Hill. The motion is to consider the additional services request by Klinger and Associates. Any discussion? Can you all call the rule, please?
Gandy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flournoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Okay, next item is consideration of the award of a contract for demolition of five oh four South Sixth Street in the city-
I was gonna say, I could speak on that.
We received two bids.
Yes, we received two bids last Friday, um, by local contractors. The Low Bean, Bob Brown Excavating, in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
And both were, oh, never mind, we didn't have an engineer's estimate for that. Do we have any kind of estimate for what we thought it was going to cost, or about that?
There you go. We're talking around the, talking around City Hall, was the order, about, around there.
And we have done the asbestos-
There was no requirement, if I remember correctly.
The testing was done, and there wasn't any, okay, that's what I wanted to verify.
I move that we award the contract for demolition of five oh four South Sixth Street to Bob Brown.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Esti, second by Gandy, to, uh, award the contract for demolition of five oh four South Sixth Street, in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion? Call the rule, please.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flournoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Okay, next item is consideration of sanitary sewer quotes for Glen Rose Manor subdivision.
So as part of this step one, um, way back then, the step one easement negotiations, uh, the owner of the lots of Glen Rose subdivision, um, requested an equivalent value of connect, or of connecting the lots uh, to sanitary sewer. Um, that property has changed hands, and so the current owners are ready to connect their houses, the house and shop to the sanitary sewer. Um, this subdivision is on Mint Avenue, um, you know, there's a house right on the corner of Mint and Fillmore, and so it's the newer houses that are being built farther south. And, uh, we, uh, city crews are not able to install all of the sanitary sewer necessary for the connection, because, um, they'll be over the eight foot deep that the sewer department feels they can do. And so we did bid out or got quotes on the deeper portions. Uh, we received two quotes, one from Drish Construction for thirty-six thousand five hundred, and one from Estill Construction for thirty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy. And, um, so we would recommend award to Drish, Drish Construction.
Make a motion that we accept the Drish bid for thirty-six thousand five hundred?
Motion by Ham?
Second.
Second by To Hill. The motion is to consider accepting the bid from Drish Construction in the amount of thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the sanitary sewer quotes, uh, for sanitary sewer work on Glen Rose Manor subdivision. Is there any discussion?
So this is the, the ci, the city's paying for this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What we did is when we got them to agree to easements, we agreed to help them with their development- What we did is when we got them to agree to easements, we agreed to help them with their development later on. And we factored that into the easement price.
So they're planning on building just more than the house that they're building right now?
Um, they have a house and then, um, a shed that is actually.
Down by the road, yeah.
Yeah, it, it is, has um, bathroom and kitchen, so it's. Um, by zoning code is considered a separate building and um, therefore it can be on its own lot. Because it has all of those services, so it's actually, um, would be the equivalent of two houses, um, so. And so we're, what we're doing is we're putting in a little bit of, well, two hundred feet of eight inch sewer. And then running the um, utility, the four inch connections to it. And this does allow then for that third lot, so there's actually three lots in that subdivision, um, this would allow then. Um, kind of open up for that third lot to be serviced with a little after, so.
Okay.
Have these been annexed in already?
Yep.
So they're in the city loans?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, would you call the rule, please?
Ham?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
All right, our next item is to consent a public hearing for the fiscal year capital improvements project for Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M.
I move that we set the public hearing for fiscal year twenty-five budget to Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M.
Motion by S.
Second.
Second by Two Hill, the motion on the floor is to consider or to set a public hearing for fiscal year twenty-five capital improvement projects.
Yeah, I guess I have to amend because I, I read the wrong thing, I don't know if I need to go back and amend it.
Oh.
I read fiscal year twenty-five budget, but it's a fiscal year twenty-five capital improvement projects.
Oh, you don't wanna hear this, right?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, that's fine, I'll straighten it out for you. Uh, so the motion on the floor is to set a public hearing for, um, fiscal year twenty-five capital improvements projects. On Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M.
Second.
No, take a vote.
Oh, sorry, did somebody hear your second?
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed that.
Esti?
She just misspoke.
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes. Our next item is to consider sending a public hearing for fiscal year twenty-five budget on Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M.
I'll, I'll make the motion to set a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-five budget, Monday, April eighth at seven P M.
Motion by Two Hill?
Second.
Second by Gandy, the motion on the floor is to set a public hearing for fiscal year twenty-five budget. On Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M, is there any discussion? Call the rule, please.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
The next item is to set a public hearing for nuisance abatements. Nuisance abatement schedule of assessments for Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at seven P M.
So moved?
Motion by Candy?
Second.
Second by Kness. So the motion on the floor is to, um, set a public hearing for the nuisance abate, abatement schedule of assessments. On Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at seven P M, is there any discussion? Yeah, would you call the rule, please?
Candy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes. Our next item is to consider sending a public hearing for stop box slash curb box repair. Schedule of assessments on Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at seven P M.
So moved.
Second.
Ham, but moves, Candy seconds. Motion on the floor is to set a public hearing for stop box slash curb stop repair schedule of assessments. On Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at seven P M, is there any discussion?
So for these assessments, since they're then sent to the treasurer, are they taxed against the property?
Yeah, they're put on as a special assessment.
Okay, special tax assessment, okay.
Or they could pay in cash if they wanted.
Absolutely.
At what point can they no longer pay here at City Hall, once it goes to the treasurer?
The Friday before, we give until four P M to, um, or four thirty P M to either appeal or pay.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Would you call the rule, please?
Ham?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Okay, next item is ordinance twenty, oh, sorry, twelve forty, consideration of. Consideration to amend electric franchise fees, second reading.
I move that we approve, um, consideration to amend the electric franchise fees. Ordinance twelve forty and move to the third and final reading.
Okay, move by Esti?
Second.
Second by Gandy, the motion on the floor is to amend the electric franchise fees. And move it from the second to the third reading, any discussion? Okay, would you call the rule, please?
Esti?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes. Okay, ordinance twelve forty-one, consideration to amend gas franchise fees, second reading.
I'd move to, uh, move the consideration to amend gas, gas franchise fees to the third reading.
Kness makes the motion.
Second.
Candy, seconds, the motion on the floor is to amend the gas franchise fees. And to move it from the second to the third reading, is there any discussion? Right, would you call the rule, please?
Kness?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twelve forty-two, consideration to amend water rates. Second reading.
I'll make the motion to move it from second to third reading.
Move, uh, move by Two Hill?
Second.
Second by Ham, so the motion on the floor is to amend water rates and move it from the second to the third reading, is there any discussion? Would you call the rule, please?
Two Hill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twelve forty-three, um, uh, consideration to amend the ordinance, uh, regarding the sewer rates, second reading.
So moved?
Move by Candy?
Second.
Second by Two Hill? The motion on the floor is to amend sewer rates and move it from the second to the third reading, is there any discussion? Okay, would you call the rule, please?
Candy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Ordinance twelve, ordinance twelve four four, consideration to amend recycling rates, second reading.
I'll make the motion to move it from second to third, and I think that's an increase of fifty cents per month.
Okay, motion by Two Hill?
Second.
Second by Candy, motion on the floor is to amend recycling rates and move it from the second to the third reading. Is there any discussion? Okay, would you call the rule, please?
Two Hill?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Can, uh, Kness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes. Ordinance twelve forty-five, consideration to amend the solid waste rates, second reading.
I'll make the motion to move it from second to third, and I believe that's seventy-five cents a month.
Two Hill makes the motion.
Second.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to amend solid wa- waste rates and move it from the second to the third and final reading, is there any discussion? Would you call the rule, please?
Two Hill?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the mayor's report, uh, Mayor Warrior Dunn asked me to say anything at this point, so. We'll move on to the attorney report, if John has anything to.
I have a few, um, I wanna mention something that came up late last week. And is still going on, I believe, and that's social media discussion about our animal ordinances. And uh, there's some misinformation out in town, and fortunately, there've been other people reacting to it on Facebook, I think. As far as, uh, individuals like Katie Anderson, that was part of the discussion. When we looked at repeal of beats, breed specific language in December. Uh, the misinformation goes to some people in town believe we have absolute bans against breeds. Uh, we have never done that, uh, we have a very extensive animal ordinance, it's about twelve pages long, actually. Deals with both how we treat animals, how we classify them as far as dangerous, vicious and ordinary. Also about how we license them and how we keep track of them as far as vaccinations and other things. And then procedures for impoundment, and procedures for recovery, and uh, procedures for reimbursement. We also have an animal control review board, which is unique to our town, but was recommended back when we had about six months of. Consideration of what's our ordinance now, uh, so I think that's getting sorted out on social media. But if somebody asks you, uh, we still, um. Have the same process as far as animal control review board, uh, we still have. Um, as far as the type of animals and so forth, uh, some other rules. Besides, uh, looking at, uh, the breed specific language that we used to have. That goes to, uh, characteristics of a particular species, if you have a two hundred pound dog. Uh, we're still gonna be interested in knowing about that, uh, our licensing requirements are probably going to, uh. Be subject to some review if we get into a situation with a two hundred pound animal sometime. Uh, but at this point, uh, our ordinance and the fact that it's prompted discussion on social media for the last three or four days. Uh, probably, uh, begs the question about, uh, should we put this back in front of public safety? Should that committee discuss it some more? Uh, the other part of it, uh, that, uh, was involved with social media, some discussion about the number of animals people can have. I don't know, there was commentary about nobody should be told how many animals they can have, but the other side of it is, we have, uh. Uh, a case going on right now, that's about having thirty-six dogs in one house. And what it did to a neighborhood and why thirty-two people signed a petition about it. So, uh, Weston and I have been, uh, involved in an ongoing process. We just last week had a extension of our sentencing hearing on that, and the latest is that. Between now and April eighteen, the court gave the owners of thirty-six animals. Uh, time to get the licensing requirements handled, also to do the abatement of the. Physical circumstances that were causing the problems with the complaints from thirty-two neighbors. Uh, if nothing has been done, uh, or if it isn't to the point where there's satisfaction by April eighteenth. Our expectation is that, uh, the court will enter an order, uh. Permitting the city to do all of the things that were in a proposed order concerning abatement. Uh, including the ability to go into the house and inspect it, uh, room by room. Uh, and area by area as far as where thirty-six dogs have been living. Uh, and also to, uh, do some cleanup and some, uh, remediation as far as the outdoor. Area of the house, which is keeping neighbors from going outside in the summer, uh, now that's, uh. Dogs, uh, uh, in a specific case, uh. When we discussed this before, I know the, uh, Animal Control Review Board was also asked to weigh in. On what they thought about the number of animals and, uh, I guess it was sort of a issue of liberty. In the number of animals you have versus, uh, what else might be a common sense argument, why you don't have thirty-six animals in one house. And, uh, since then, we've had the city, uh, medical examiner, uh, provide us a letter for our sentencing hearing. Which basically characterized that many animals as a hoarding psychological problem. Diagnosed condition under DSM five, the, uh, statistical manual on mental health illnesses. And other con- uh, concepts about what might be going on there, uh, that, uh, needs to be looked into. And I'm not accusing any of the people at that household of being mentally ill, uh, per se. But they are, uh, subject to some scrutiny as far as a hoarding, uh, diagnosis. Uh, and, uh, that'll probably be talked about more after April eighteenth, after we see if they get the things straightened out and abated. Um, as far as, uh, dogs, that's probably enough conversation about dogs for tonight. But I would invite the council to consider, uh, having this, uh, discussed again with the Public Safety Committee. Taking another look at our ordinance, not just about numbers of dogs and the questions about breeds. But also, um, um, things that have to do in our zoning ordinance. With whether there ought to be, uh, a better definition as far as permitted uses. Conditional uses in residential neighborhoods, uh. And whether that belongs in front of the Animal Control Review Board or in front of the Board of Adjustment, uh, if we go that direction. Or if we wanna look at our zoning ordinance, uh, classified areas of, uh, land use. And right now, the only place in town that you specifically automatically can have it as a permitted use. As far as things like kennels, uh, is in our, um, light industrial on up. Uh, out in the industrial parks and places like that, um, other than that. You can probably appeal to the Board of Adjustment to have a, um, animal kennel in your neighborhood, but that's. Really not what our, uh, residential classifications, uh, right now allow. So, uh, those kinds of discussions, if we weigh in on this, we may have some amendments that should be talked over during twenty twenty-four. As far as, uh, things that, uh, really are partly animal issues and partly zoning issues. Uh, another thing that's been going on, uh, we've had a group of complaints about a house down south. Fourth Street, Weston and I are in the process of going after that house, uh, in which. We presently believe squatters may be living, uh, but the house is definitely in bad shape. Uh, it's very visibly in bad shape from the exterior of the house, and we know the house has been open, has had animals in it and has weather in it. So, uh, that one right now, uh, I just talked with the abstract company about it again this morning. And they said that they will have some paperwork over to us, so we can look at it and possibly proceed yet this week. Uh, another thing, uh, I know Weston, you wanna talk about this a little bit too, as far as our five oh four South Sixth. We had, uh, bid approval tonight to demolish that house at five oh four South Sixth. If you remember, uh, several months back, Kevin Franklin, the man that deeded that house to the city because he didn't think he could maintain it. Uh, came here and talked to you about it, um, I think that got handled in a really. Pretty successful way, uh, courteous of Weston, uh, but it also got handled in a way that's totally consistent. With our city policies, uh, and I don't know if you ever look at our set of policies that we publish and stick out. In the front vestibule, but there's about ten signed different resolutions on policies we have. Including a relocation and dislocation policy, when our acts as government result in somebody being. Forced to relocate, or we've caused them to dislocate, uh, in some way, uh, maybe given them a reason to feel it. In some way, we wanted them to incur a bit of hardship or some kind of damage. That is not the way the city works, we don't wish that for anybody, but if the housing problem is bad enough. And we have to do something about a place where somebody lives, Weston's the guy that gets the honor. Uh, and I'm the other one, uh, Weston did a very good thing here with Kevin Franklin. And, uh, when Kevin, uh, was relocated. It was pretty much courtesy of Weston looking into places here in town that could help with the relocation. Uh, and that, uh, went through partly what, Optome?
Yes, Optome helped quite a bit.
Okay, and I would say you did most of the talking to Kevin about getting him, um, out of where he was. And into something new that was better for him, and what did you do next?
So, once we got him into someplace else. So, once we got him into someplace else, um, we were able to condemn the house at that point. Uh, show that it was, didn't have very much value to it, so it wouldn't affect his income status. So he could stay living in the rent assisted places. Um, and as we just moved him, got him moved over there. And we red tagged the house and then.
So you worked with Optome, got him into a rental assistance facility that he could afford?
Yes, yep. So through Optome filling out his, his applications and stuff like that. And we talked to the, the different facilities in town and found him one that was, had an opening and it got him into there.
Yeah, go a little farther with this. Kevin went down to Jackson Point. Uh, Jackson Point is a subsidized rent housing facility for challenged people. Uh, my opinion and Weston's opinion is that he was happy as a bug down there. And uh, he was getting along fine. Uh, unfortunately, the reason I'm telling you about this is it's a good example of how things can work. Under our policies, uh, as far as the best thing for a person that's in substandard housing. And is willing to work with us, but unfortunately Kevin, because of a respiratory uh illness passed away in the last week. Uh, we've talked to some of his family. Um, he has a sister that's been in town and looking at things for a little bit. And I think you've talked to her too.
Yep.
Uh, but uh, anyway, that one I would uh probably in the future look back to and point to. As far as the way this can work with cooperation. And um, I, I would say that sometimes Weston appears to be a bulldog. Uh, but on that one, I would say that he had the right diplomacy and the right touch with Kevin Franklin. So uh, that's what we'll try to do as far as our policy about relocation and dislocation, if we get a chance. Okay?
I have two quick questions.
Yeah.
Are you allowed to apply escalating rate to licenses on the number of dogs? So let's say if you have three dogs, it's one fee and if you had, you got up to more than five, it'd be a different rate. Are you allowed to do that?
Well, probably we can do anything we want.
Okay, the second question.
As long as there is a reasonable uh relationship to something we can point at and say, this is why it has to be this way. Yeah.
Yeah, because we want to discourage thirty dogs in the house. So uh, the other question I had, you mentioned large dogs like two hundred pounds. Can you run a licensing fee based on weight of dog? Sounds like you can.
I think you can on classification of animals. Um, to a point, um, if you. If you charge more for the license, because there are going to be things that are associated with the two hundred pounder. Uh, we're probably going to be also looking at whether the person has adequate uh containment. Uh, offense or something that makes sure the two hundred pounder isn't uh, uh, a risk to the surroundings. Um, we've had some situations like this in the past. We had a pair of lion hounds down. On South Fourth Street near Handy Pantry that uh literally broke through a wooden fence. And one of them killed about six little animals that were too close. Because a dog walker thought it was cute for those dogs to bark at the big dogs. So yeah, it's possible.
I thought it might be something the committee could consider.
Yeah, I, I think there'd be some situations where you could show there's a reasonable connection to uh regulating it. And charging more to keep track of it. Um, I don't think Weston is uh, uh, hoping to have that added to different things that he does. But we haven't had an a- animal control officer since uh Kendrick Wilson years ago. So uh, right now, nobody's checking on that unless we get a complaint.
Okay, is there anything else?
I think uh, I'm gonna, I've got something else that's just come up between Doug and I. In the last day or two, we're going to deal with as far as a ongoing disagreement with a lady named Maxine. But I think that probably we may have to talk over and see if there's a committee that can deal with that.
Okay, in that case, we'll move on to committee and board reports. Personnel committee, uh, Terry Kness.
Sure, the personnel committee met super informally, um, had conversations with Doug. Um, everybody was in agreement that Doug's doing a great job and uh decided we do a more formal evaluation um upon his year review.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Water and sewer utilities committee.
Yeah, so water and sewer utilities committee met. Um, had a few houses asking for a reduction in their bill. In all three cases, there was a leakage that just went out, you know, into the lawn or something. None of it went into sewers, so uh, we decided that we would recommend approval. And so the three are as follows. Uh, first, we recommend reduction uh to the bill of seven oh one West Briggs. In the order of four hundred and one dollars and sixty cents. We recommend a reduction uh to two hundred and eleven South Fifteenth Street. In the order of five fifteen and sixty-nine cents. And we recommend a reduction in the bill for nine oh seven South Main Street. In the order of seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents.
Was there a fourth uh application that you denied?
No, it's just the three this time.
Okay, I thought I read that one was denied, but alright.
Oh, um, there were minutes from a.
Previous meeting.
A previous meeting on today's agenda.
Oh. So we make an emotional, well, we'll do the first one first, right?
Sure.
Is that a motion for the seven oh one West Briggs?
Yeah, I guess I'm formally making a motion for that one.
Okay, motion by. Row?
Second.
Second by Kness. Motion on the floor is to uh approve the uh water and sewer reduction in their. In the bill of seven oh one West Briggs Avenue by four hundred and one dollars and fifty cents.
Sixty cents.
Sixty cents. Four hundred and one dollars and sixty cents. Any discussion? On uh, the vote, okay? Roll call, please.
Row.
Yes.
Kness.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve two eleven South Fifteenth Street.
Okay, motion by Kness.
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Motion on the floor is to reduce the uh bill for two eleven South Fifteenth Street. By five hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. Correct?
Sixty-nine cents.
Sixty-nine cents. Haven't dealt with my fives and sixes tonight. Okay, five hundred, five hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Is there any discussion? We can call the roll, please.
Kness.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Ham or Row?
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Okay, one more. Nine oh seven South Main Street in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents.
I'll make the motion for that.
Second.
Motion by Row, second by Two Hill to reduce the uh water sewer bill of nine hundred and seven South Main Street. By seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents. I got the five right that time? Any discussion? All in, uh, call the roll, please.
Row.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Kness.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Just so the public understands what we're doing here, we are not uh, not, we're, we're simply not charging people. For the sewer portion of their bill because of water that leaked out of their, wherever it leaked from, did not go down the drain. So we didn't treat it, and so we don't incur any cost, although we billed for that cost. So we're just reimbursing uh the over, over village because of the nature of the leak. They still pay for the water.
Do we ever reimburse the water?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because it's always used, right? And we know that it's been used unless there's some kind of like.
It's billed for.
Okay.
The question is whether it goes down a drain or not. So if it doesn't go down a drain, then they're subject to uh applying for a reimbursement.
Right, and I, and I've been present for sewer reimbursements. I was just curious if there was ever a situation where water was reimbursed.
Any water that would go through the meter would leave the city system, and so they would be taking the water. I mean, even if it's a leak, it still makes sense for them to pay for it.
Yeah. Okay, Ways and Means Committee.
Uh, the Ways and Means Committee met on the twentieth of March. Um, we had two items on the agenda. And we were addressing the airport management contract and the airport FBO, the fixed based operator contract. Um, and we have um, two recommendations, two changes to the current contract, I guess, two recommendations to make. Um, the first one is um, to increase. Uh, what I'm going to call the management contract, we, we combine the pain to contracts into one now. So to increase the combined amount from the two of them. Um, to a hundred and three thousand a year, starting in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Um, uh, motion was made by Doug, seconded by Terry in a past three zero to recommend the council that we. We increase from the current rate of, I believe, ninety. I don't know, it's somewhere in my notes.
Oh yeah, ninety-four thousand eight hundred ninety-six.
E- exactly. So um, to um, yeah, ninety-four, eight ninety-six. Um, there is a proposed increase of the two percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which all current city employees receive. And then starting in twenty twenty-six, we will see the increase up to a hundred and three thousand. So, I guess I will make the motion to um. To accept the, the proposed contract.
Second.
Okay, motion by Two Hill, second by Kness. Motion on the floor. This is the management contract, not the FBO?
This is the management contract, the first, yes.
This is the uh, motion on the floor is to approve a change in payment on the management contract. For fiscal year twenty-six to a hundred and three thousand dollars.
Starting in year twenty twenty-six, yes.
Physical year twenty-six.
And this contract's going to be in place until twenty thirty-four?
It will eventually.
Yes.
With that one hundred and three thousand dollars in place, is there a discussion about?
I think it's understood that they get the same salary increase that all employees get each year.
Trad- traditionally, they've always received the same.
So this is, this is a adjustment in the base.
So.
And then they'll get the two percent or three, whatever percentage we give to employees.
Okay.
So they'll get the two percent this year automatically, and then this new uh valuation takes place in the year after. Do, a motion and a second?
Yes.
So, any, any more discussion?
I, I will point out too, that um, we do have, if anybody in the city has not been out there, we do have a phenomenal facility out there. Um, it is well worth the, the, the money spent here. Um, and we're lucky to have somebody that can do both. Um, the airport management and.
Practical management.
Yes, yep, so um, we're, we're in a fortunate situation right now.
Doug, you went, we saw today and you also on Saturday, a week ago. Was the economic impact of the airport is on the order of two point three million dollars a year.
Right.
So that's significant.
Is that person here tonight?
That person is here tonight.
He is here, he wants to speak to it.
That would be Bob Lyons.
Bob Lyons, manager of our airport.
Answer any questions, but I want to thank, thank the city council and the mayor for all the years of support to the airport. Cause it, like I told all of you, it, it's a, it's a big deal, like I'll talk about tomorrow. Um, it's, it is a big deal, all the support that's happened over the years. We've got a great airport. We, we're considered an enhanced airport. And uh, I've been there quite a long time now.
Can you describe what an enhanced airport is compared to most of the airports around Iowa?
Yeah, so we're one of, I think we looked today, thirteen.
I think that was a number.
Enhanced airports. We're enhanced because of the, the, the bottom line is our runway length. Fifty-five hundred feet on our runway, and that put us in a, a second above or right below commercial uh airports. Which we stand out alone in that based on the population of our community. The size, so the size of the airport we have, we stand out. So, we're very fortunate there. Um, I gave everybody a list of all the, everything that's been done over the years. We've done a lot at the airport since the mid-nineties, mid-nineties. And uh, you know, I'm, I'm just so happy that the city supported everything that's been done. Because without that, it wouldn't be done and it's, the, the runway opened the doors. It really did. It opened the doors to larger, larger jet traffic. It opened the doors for example, like Cambridge stop rate. Uh, to, a lot of big jets coming in for them. And so, it's, it's been a, a lot of great years and a lot of good things have happened.
But also due to a lot of good management, it sounds like.
It's all, it's all good. It's, it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of knowledge and a lot of really hard work and a lot of hours. A lot of people don't realize what it takes to, to run an airport like that and to do a good job and to make it nice. And, and I appreciate having both contracts because that makes it able for myself and Roger and a little bit of help over the years to. To make it work. Without that, it is very difficult to make it work. You, you have to have both. And uh, we take great pride in the airport and when you come to it, it's going to look nice every single time. That's what we've done for a lot of years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. The motion on the floor again is to approve the management contract. Uh, Bob Lyons, in the amount of one hundred and three thousand dollars beginning in fiscal year twenty-six. Any, any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Uh, and the second agenda that we had on the um, on, on the, for the meeting was um, to extend the FBO contract. Which is the fixed based operator contract for an additional three years um, to expire uh June thirtieth of twenty thirty-four.
What, what does that mean, fixed based operator?
So, there, there's the airport management position, the, and then there's the maintenance of. Uh, maintaining all the runways, the mowing, the plowing, the um, operation of the hangars. Uh, like Bob was saying, they have to change the uh, they have to change the cables in the hangars. They go through once a year and change a cable in the hangar, so they don't slam down. It's, it's a hazard. Um, so he does both those positions. So it's always been written as two separate contracts because it's, it, it, it could be two different positions. Um, but like Bob said, it would be fiscal, financially, it would be hard to, to do one without the other and still make it operate. So it is two separate contracts, um, but they're both being offered to Bob, so.
Thank you.
Um, and the, the current one extend, or expires in twenty thirty-one. So we're, we're making a motion to extend it three additional years. Um, at which point I'm guessing we're going to have to find somebody new out there is, is why we're doing it three additional years. So um, we're getting a, a, a great deal of, I would extend it another, or make a motion to extend another twenty years if Bob would let us, but I don't think that'll happen. So um, we're going to extend it to twenty thirty-four. So I will make that motion.
Second.
Two, motion by Two Hill, second by Kness. Motion on the floor is to extend the uh, FBO contract. To uh, June thirty, twenty thirty-four. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Administrative Department. Board of Adjustment. Yeah, but I can't get that to open up, so we don't do uh, do you have any questions about it? Cause we don't approve it or anything.
Just report on them.
Yeah.
Doug?
Yeah.
So, thank you. I don't know why I mentioned it.
Board of Adjustment.
FBOA, it, it, he's got it.
I didn't even remember, what was on board today? Oh, it was a.
A bed breakfast.
Yes, it was, it was a really, it was um, a record short uh, meeting for Board of Adjustment. I think six whole minutes. Um, so yeah, that, there is nothing for council to consider on this one. Sometimes with Board of Adjustment, if there is a very. Sometimes with Board of Adjustment, if there is a variance that is approved, you can ask the board to reconsider it if you'd wish. Uh, but nothing on this particular one for you guys to address. Just letting you guys know that there was a Board of Adjustment. Yes, yeah, sometimes there is something for you guys to.
Mine did that too, Doug, I just had to close my agenda. Mine did that too, I just had to close my agenda.
Oh. Well, close the agenda. That button's not working either. If I can work off this piece of paper here. All right, uh, now we get to administrative department, are you done?
I said two hours left, you'll be fine with the paper, howie.
Yeah.
Uh, so on the project update, um, I think there's probably something to say about all of them tonight. Uh, I'm starting with step two, so the sanitary sewer demands on the east side of town. The sewer department has finally completed all of the cleanup that they needed to do on a couple of the yards uh with the dry uh dry years. Um, they did one more seeding for the spring. Um, and I think I'm just, I'm mentioning it after all of these years that if there's any citizens left out there with step two that felt there's still something to be cleaned up with step two, um, let us know, because we feel like we finally got everyone's um concerns related to step two taken care of. Uh, they are gonna be um abandoning man manholes uh throughout the system. Um, so I'm, but that that's gonna be off and on over the next couple of years, and I won't be reporting on anything else related to step two. Um, step three uh is, is D, Thomas likes to put, it's boring project. Um, it is the forest name that goes from greased lighting lift station to step one on the other side of highway one. They have installed all of their pipe. And uh they're actually starting filling the water main today, so if there is anyone on south of Fillmore that is having, that is seeing maybe a change of slight change in water pressure, that is because they're filling um over a mile of twenty four inch pipe. And it will take them about three days in order to completely fill that pipe with water, clean water, in order to test it um before we fill it full of not clean water um and start using it. And then, then, once they get the testing completed, they'll start the cleanup in in mid-April and then do seeding um at the end of April, first of May, right at the seeding window. Um, and then, Crook Creek Bridge and Highway One, uh admittedly, the con- the press release and the notifications that have been made to the public regarding road closures have been vague and confusing, but that's because I'm kind of confused at this point. Uh, stuff is changing very rapidly, and then when we get sleet slash snow on Friday, that changes the contractor's schedules even more. Um, so we're just, I don't, we're kinda taking it day by day. Um, I am in, I will say I am coordinating or communicating with the important people, the school buses and emergency services, so even though I don't necessarily get out to the public every change, I do make sure that um dispatch and schools know what's going on. Um, and so, my apologies to the public that it's not necessarily the clearest. Uh, but we do make sure that the emergency services are our highest priority in accessing everything. Um, that being said, as of today, Highway One is closed to through traffic, so you can access everything from Buchanan. Um, north of the roundabout is closed. Um, so you can still make left and right turns on Libertyville Road, you just can't go north. Uh, they're trying to do that so the contractor can finish up um some seeding and cleanup, as well as pouring the rest of the trail. Um, if we ever get uh warm weather, they will redo the striping or the painting on Highway One. Um, so there's just, there's a lot of little things to finish up throughout Highway One. But most of the work is happening at Fillmore and and Highway One. Uh, right now, again, as of today, I'll double check tomorrow morning, but Fillmore is still open in the east west direction. Um, again, I think the rain slash snow on Friday changed their schedule a little bit. Uh, but very soon, they'll be closing Fillmore completely down in order to start installing storm sewer in that area. Um, and again, last I heard, Crook Creek Bridge is scheduled for April fifteenth. So, we're gonna just keep playing everything day by day, and I'll get it, get things up on Facebook best I can, um, but we appreciate everyone. Um, some people's great sense of humor and everyone bearing with us during this. Um, any questions on that? I'm not sure if we can answer it, but are there any questions on those two projects?
Uh, the detour for Highway One is the same as the one you had before, correct?
Yep, so, um, the hospital detour that takes you Fillmore west to Liberty Drive and around, that is still the same until we close down all of Fillmore of that intersection. And at that point, people are just gonna turn a block earlier, and they're gonna turn onto Iowa rather than Fillmore. So it's um doesn't change anything significantly. Okay, um, and then, another kind of couple, well, another road closure. Um, I jokingly asked our EMA director if he's gonna issue a shelter in place, given how many roads are gonna be closed in the next month. But uh, the contractor for Jefferson and and Ninth Street Water Main has decided to start work this week. And um, that includes installing water main on Jefferson from Seventh to Ninth. And given how narrow that street is, we are going to close Jefferson down between Seventh and Ninth. Um, property owners in the area should have gotten letters either today or they'll go in the mail. Um, and the uh Pergin Rec, I let them know. Um, you'll still be able to access the businesses, we're just, again, closing it to through traffic so that the contractors can stay safe uh while working in that area. Jefferson will be closed when they, once they finish the water main on Jefferson, they'll move to Ninth. Um, open Jefferson up and then close Ninth. They are looking at um closing Jefferson down next week, so I'll get something out on Facebook uh later this week, once I've confirmed with them that that's their schedule. Uh, then also, um Calvin and myself and Doug and the mayor met with um the estate manager for Ed Felger, and John Mercy was there, and we showed her some options of a precast, not precast, um bathrooms that are built offsite and then delivered. Um, these are more expensive, but they will increase the timeline, they'll shorten the timeline significantly so that we can get um at least part of it done, uh possibly even this year. Um, in discussing it with the estate, um she did approve a design that includes four single user stalls. Uh, we also talked about a different occupation for the Chautauqua bathrooms. Um, putting it in between the two upper shelters, shelters, um so you can almost view it from Burlington. And uh, this will get easy access between those two shelters, it also decreases the amount of water and sewer service that's required to be installed, saving a little bit of money, so. We had some back and forth with the estate and finally came to some conclusions, and so Calvin and myself and Doug are working on um finally proceeding with some of that after a little bit of a lull. And then, lastly, is uh the fire station floor plan that we talked about a little bit uh earlier in the agenda, and um, I'm not studying in detail in the sense that I can explain it or present it to you. Um, it's eight fifteen, the halftime's almost done with the hockey game, so you need to get out of here. And um, so, either we can, you can accept it and have uh cleaner move forward, or you can ask uh the Public Safety Transportation Committee to look at, look at it more, whatever the council's choosing regarding the um fire station.
I think if we're talking about a redo, we ought to have a PST, look at Public Safety and Transportation Committee, look at it again.
I would agree.
So I recommend, yes, I moved that the matter be referred to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion by Gandy, second by Kness, to move the uh floor plan for the fire station to Public Safety Transportation. Any discussion? Call the rule, please.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
All right, that is all for me, thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Uh, Doug?
Roughly eleven hours and thirty minutes, we'll be having our first public presentation of the fiscal twenty five budget. The staff has worked extremely hard getting this thing put together and scheduled. But the primary objective to doing this is to, for not only tran- trans- transportation, transparency, but also citizen engagement, partner partner engagement, so that everybody knows what we're doing it, how we're doing it, and why we're doing it. And I think that inquiring minds want to know, people somewhat think they know what we're doing, but we really wanna put the numbers in front of them and give them the opportunity to ask questions and and know why we're spending the money that we're spending for certain infrastructure projects. So, pretty excited about it, but there's a lot of people that are nervous that will be presenting tomorrow, so please be patient with us, this is our first go. And right now, we do not have live streaming right now, but hopefully we will tomorrow, so Jason will be working on that in the morning.
Hey Doug, could you give us some idea what the agenda's going to be tomorrow morning?
I
Just briefly.
So, basically, what's going to happen is the, when the presentations start, I will do an introduction.
Presentations for each department.
For each department, they will have a fifteen minute time slot for each department head, and I will have an agenda there for everybody to look at and know which one is next. They have all prepared a five minute-ish presentation, and they will then will allow the council ten minutes for questions if they have any for council, to ask questions.
For city council?
For city council to ask department heads questions in regards to their budgets, whatever they may pops in their mind, they can ask, and we'll move on to the next one, and until they're all done and gone through, then we'll open the, the council will open the floor to the public to ask questions in regards to their budgets, and if we don't have the answer to that, then we will take the questions, do the research, and then we will answer those questions in a public forum in a different meeting, so that we can give accurate information, we don't wanna fly by the seat of our pants and make something up, we want to make sure that they get real answers. But from my understanding, this is the first time that we've done this. So, we may have to tweak next year and the year after that, but the more transparent we are, the more people understand what we do.
What's the sequence of departments?
The sequence originally was just going to be in line of the the budgets that you had before us, but uh the airport will be going first because he has to actually go on a flight later in the day. But other than that, off the top of my head, I should have brought that schedule with me, but I'll I'll have that scheduled, but it would be the fire department, dispatch, police, those are just off the top of my head. And we'll be going, and we'll have our master spreadsheet that everybody will be able to see, and hopefully, everything functions well.
Might wanna point out that it starts at eight o'clock tomorrow morning at the uh Sondheim Center, in the Arts and Convention Center.
In the theater.
In the theater. Yes, they allotted us till noon, that was the best times that we could get. The Arts Convention Center is extremely busy and booked, and I appreciate they're working with us, trying to get this out there. And maybe, if it's a, if it's a large event, we'll do this again next year, and if it's a smaller event, then we'll we'll, we may move it somewhere else at the council's pleasure. So, anything else? Moving on, Melanie's already talked about Highway One, Crook Creek Bridge. We are working on employee evaluations, that's really important for us to get feedback. It was a little bit difficult for me to go through employee eva- evaluations, only being here less than a year. So, having some of those inputs, but we'll be working on those after Tuesday, we're trying to get the other things done. But it's really important to get that feedback on both sides of the table, and as time progresses, we can talk about that further. We talked about the Chautauqua Restrooms, and then the one thing that Weston brought to my attention that we need to discuss is the fifty seven through fifty nine North Court Street. Council had given this property four months to remedy the property issues they had. The owner has thirty days left of this timeframe. And so, we were looking for guidance and recommendations for the next steps, which should be made by the property committee and the city attorney.
Weston, can you give us an update on where they're at? Can they get finished in thirty days? Have they made any progress at all?
Not that I know of, she's not reported any, hasn't seen any activity. Um, no questions being asked. Um, property is up for sale, and a few people have looked at it. Um, have not heard of anybody that has been serious or had deep enough pockets to attempt it. I think the property's gonna be in the same state it is right now in thirty days. And that's why I wanted to kinda get it, get on the schedule for the property committee. And it's not a simple property to take, it's not a six fifty seven A standard property. Um, I think there's probably a lot of other things that are gonna play into it, John can talk a little bit more about that, but um, I don't know if it's gonna be a condemnation, I don't know if it's gonna be a six fifty seven A or how this is gonna play out when we do go to the judge. Uh, we do have a court case still open on it. Um, and that'll be a decision that we need to make, is whether we're gonna move forward at this time with it.
What date is the next court appearance?
We have not set one for this one, or the judge hasn't set one for this one, I should say. Um, typically, so far, what we've seen out of the judge is that, um, if we get a guilty verdict out of him, he has orders an abatement, so I don't know what that's gonna look like, or what what we can do as far as an abatement on this property.
It will be at least after the end of April. She's got till that uh time period to report something, um, and we're just not getting anything.
So, property committee should have a recommendation ready by the second council meeting in April.
I think we should at least talk about it.
Or first week of May.
Anticipation is that if we get a guilty verdict and we, we get an order to abate, do we want that, what are we going to do with that, and how are, how are we gonna proceed as far as that?
Do you have access, can can the property committee go through it now, or is there access to it or not?
She's been very open to us, going through it.
This is probably a different situation, yeah.
We can probably arrange it, it'd be a voluntary thing, like Miss Walsh.
I think so, I, uh, we're on pretty good speaking terms. So, if we can do that informally without a court order, that's probably uh beneficial as far as keeping the door open, as far as other things she's trying to do. If she gets a willing buyer and they have something that they would work out with the city, uh, it will eliminate the need to do a six fifty seven A, we can do it with a court oversight on an agreed settlement, uh, but that isn't out there on our table right now, we haven't had more than suggestions that somebody was looking at it to do something, there hadn't been any real dollars on the table.
Getting a guilty verdict also can muddy the waters if they're looking at a grant or a loan application. So, um, that's something we ran into with the selling of one of our properties already. Is that we kept postponing to get the sale done, so we didn't affect the sale of it, we got it through.
So is it premature to refer it to property committee now? It seems like there are some outstanding questions.
Well, I think we're gonna be in the same spot in thirty days. And I figured it would take two weeks to three weeks or whatever to get property committee. We can always cancel it if we if for some reason it would sell, and we would say, oh, we don't need it, we could s- we could cancel the committee.
And if they formulate a re- a recommendation that's not pertinent at the time, doesn't have to be accepted, so.
Well, then I would refer it to property committee, um, I guess the discussions are on fifty seven fifty nine North Court Street.
Okay, we have a motion to uh move the question of fifty nine through fifty nine North Court Street building to property committee.
Second. Second.
Second by Candy.
He's thinking snacks.
Uh, let's see, oh, so uh, motion by Esti, second by Gandy, to move uh. The question of fifty-seven through fifty-nine North Court Street to property committee, any discussion? Call the rule, please.
Esti.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Kness.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes. Alright, I think that's everything. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Second.
It was a tie. Motion by Kness, second by Tam to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. No, all in favor, say aye. Thank you.